Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, April 7th, 2020. And we will begin the Commissioner's Public Statement, sorry, 2021. We will begin with the Commissioner's Public Statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their sorts. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Right, now that I'm awake and we're moving forward, and I know what year it is, I will note through the record that all three Commissioners are present today, and I believe there's a change in the agenda.
Yes, I move that we strike item K from the agenda, an agreement for services provided by the Indiana Institute on Disability.
Second, we have a motion.
Excuse me, Ms. Margie, could we just, rather than strike it, could we just table it to next week?
Oh, okay.
Continue?
Yes, continue it to next Wednesday, please.
Okay, I move that we continue item I, or no, I'm sorry, item J to next Wednesday.
A second, Deb.
Okay, so we have a motion at second to continue item J till the April 14th meeting. Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call roll on the continuation of the item?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioners approve, 3-0.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to department updates. First, we have Ms. Coe from the Health Department who will be joining us without video.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, very good. I, there's some drilling and things going on in the hallway, and I figured you did not want those to be in the background while I was talking, and so here I am. Since 2021, our Indiana Metrics Map, the advisory for Monroe County, has went from yellow to blue, back to yellow. Cases per 100,000 have been in orange, yellow, and are back to orange, as we talked about last week. We currently are remaining in yellow. We had a very slight uptick in our cases per 100,000 this past week, so what you'll see today is, you know, maybe 10, so 135, 138 cases per 100,000. So last week it was 128 per 100,000, so that's a small increase. We hope that that will be indicative of a plateauing and a downward trend, but we certainly are not out of the woods. It is increasing. Our cases per day have ranged from the 30s down to the mid-teens, and now they are back up into the upper 20s. Our positivity rate, while low, has been rising. So in early February, it was 2.5%. Early March, it was 0.6%, and currently stands at 1%. So that's a low positivity rate, but again, it is increasing along with those new cases. So all of this information, along with what we're seeing across the state and other states across our region, indicates that we need to use caution in terms of easing any restrictions. Vaccination demand does remain high, and we continue, as a county and a state, to get people vaccinated. In the state, over a million people have been fully vaccinated, and over 3 million doses of vaccine have been administered. So that's very good news. In Andy, in Monroe County, we have over 25,000 people fully vaccinated, but we, we need that to be over 118,000. So we're very happy about the, how quickly we're getting those people vaccinated, but we, we need it to be much higher before we start even thinking about relying on vaccine to, to help us out of this, right? It is, it is all of these measures together. So the Board of Health did meet last night. As we've talked about before, our mask and previous regulations will remain intact. They made a few very minor changes last night. One is that they did set an end date, kind of a goal for 5/28, unless it's rescinded or extended before that time. So this is just kind of saying, we have a goal, and let's get, let's do everything we can to reach a point where we won't need as many of these restrictions by the end of May. It may be that we need to keep a few of them, but we can let most of them go. And again, I just say that that's our goal. We can extend it, the Board can extend those regulations if they need to, but they can also be rescinded early if that is appropriate as well. There were just a few, again, minor changes in terms of language. We added a consultation with local health departments for the schools K through 12. We're doing that anyway. There were a few changes with communal living regarding fall capacity and outdoor guests. So as soon as all of these edits are made, and we have that final version, we'll get those signed, and we'll get them posted for everyone to see. The next board meeting is set for May 4th at 4:30, and so the Board will be reviewing these regulations at that time. And that is what I have for you today.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Coe. We appreciate your work, your work at the Board, Dr. Sharp, keeping a close eye on where things are and keeping us safe. It's so important.
I will add one thing. We did have one of our part-time staff that we've hired for COVID response and kind of taking those complaint calls and such, has some artistic flyer creativity talent, and she made a couple of new flyers for us. We have sent out to businesses. We have already received positive feedback on those from several of the businesses, and they ju, they're posted on her website. So if you need one for your business, feel free to go and, and print that out and use it. It just is a reminder that while the state has eased their restrictions, Monroe County has not.
Yeah, and it's a reminder of all the future things that we can achieve and we can have in our, in our daily life if we all stick with this. I would ask TSE if they wouldn't mind posting the link in the chat sometime during this meeting, no hurry, and let's see if there are any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I looked at those new flyers, they're fabulous, just fabulous, very eye-catching, just, yeah, kudos.
Yes, Lenea did a great job on those.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, they're, they look great, so thank you, thank you again, please send our thanks to her, and we'll get that, we'll get that posted on our webs, on our chat. The web address on our chat so that folks can find this for themselves. And, and with that, we will move on to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning, thanks for having me again this morning. I wanted to let you know, we have now moved into a new month, and so this month's prevention and awareness topic is flooding. It can potentially happen quite often in the spring and any season. We've been known to have large floods in the winter months as well as the fall, but it is, seems to be at a higher rate in this, in the springtime, and so it's appropriate time. There's not a lot of preparedness topics, so each week I'm just going to give a short statement so the public can just be thinking about things in regards to flooding. One of the most important, I think, is the turnaround, don't drown statement. We want to continue to reiterate that. I know people that live in those areas that flooding can overpass their roads often think, oh, I've gone through this a million times, it's not that deep, and those type of things, and they will not turn around. And it seems here lately, specifically here in Monroe County, we have had to do several water rescues when those waterways, when road, when water has been over our roadways quite often. Of course, our first responders are always willing, and, and we continue to strive for public safety and of our residents as well, but we encourage people to make that drive back around and go that long way to get to your home and not drive through those roadways or make additional plans and not travel through. So that's my statement this week. Each week we'll have a short statement in regards to flooding and ways to be prepared for flooding. We still have two blood drives scheduled. They are April 29th and April 30th. All of the dates we have scheduled are on our county website at co.monroe.in.us. I think I said on Friday's press call that we have had a perfect attendance thus far since we started these drives, and every spot has been filled. So I am encouraging the public to not let us down this month, because though that is very joyful and wonderful news, we seem to have several spots still available. I know it's the beginning of April, and these dates are the end of April, but Allison's starting to get a little nervous with this one, just because normally they're quite filled up, and they're not yet. So if that's something that you can do, I encourage you to go to the county website, check those dates, hop to the Red Cross website, and get signed up for an April spot if either one of those days work for you. While you're on that county website, you can register for an EverBridge Monroe County Alert Account. The Commissioners signed a contract last week to renew that program for three more years, and so we now have that mass notification system. And if you're a resident and have not signed up, I encourage you to do so. And I just want to also add, we have been involved with Deputy Driver's Funeral Services yesterday. That's been our most pressing target that we have been focused on the last week, and I was so impressed with our community and how we come together for our fallen officer, and we want to make sure that we remember as a community to continue to check on those public safety providers that were very affected by this loss and tragedy in our community, and we continue to stick together as a family. And then Ms. Clottle did not mention, because she is just one of those individuals that doesn't want to give kudos to herself more than likely, but it is Public Health Week, and our public health providers and our health department have done such a, just tremendous job for the last, what, 15, 16 months, nonstop. So from our department to theirs, we wanted to wish them happily Public Health Week and thank them for all of their efforts for our community. We are so blessed with them and this community and cannot say enough great things about them, so thank you so much, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We appreciate you, and yes, the Public Health Week just kind of evaded my radar, so wow, this, this is a big time to celebrate public health. Let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'd just like to reiterate Allison's thanks to the Public Health Department for all they do, not only surrounding COVID, but they've kept everything else going at the same time. I also want to comment that Deputy Driver's funeral yesterday was very, very moving. It was a real tribute to him.
It certainly was. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, congratulations to the Health Department, and many, many thanks. And I would add to the information about Deputy Driver that people, if they want to make a donation, can do so through the Indiana Fallen Heroes Foundation, and there's information on that at the Monroe County Sheriff's webpage, which people can access through co.monroe.in.us, and also at the Monroe County Sheriff's Facebook page. They've got information about where and how people can make donations.
Yes, and it's also still a hot link on our main website at co.monroe.in.us on how to donate to that fund. And along those lines, I do want to extend our, our gratitude to Allison Moore and Kate Cephalonia for all their work. And as Ms. Moore pointed out to me yesterday, the Highway Department also helped out and brought one of their trucks over, and we really appreciate their assistance. And I, I want to take a second to thank Deputy Jeff Brown, who did an amazing job and is still doing an amazing job as the Family Liaison Officer, and a huge thank you to Ms. Purdy, our Commissioner's Administrator, because she worked on so many details, and you would, you would not believe how much goes into organizing this so that everybody can focus on what they need to focus on at this, at this really tragic time. And so a huge, huge thank you from all of us to Ms. Purdy for her hard work on this while she's been doing everything else too. So we appreciate all of the contributions, and there are many more than that, from everyone who, who really made this, as, as Commissioner Jones put it out, an incredibly thoughtful, compassionate, moving service, which our community sorely needed. So thank you to everyone for that. Great, we will move on to Ms. Ridge for a road and street update. Good morning.
Good morning. I hate to keep giving the same reports until we kind of get into paving season and such, but of course, that's what we're doing, is preparing roads for paving, pothole patching, tree trimming, things like that. So yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. I have to give kudos to Toby Turner and Allison, that's who arranged the truck and got it there and had it all cleaned up and prepared, so I thank them for representing highway quite well. So again, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Great. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Okay, just a quick note, do you have, Ms. Ridge, can you give folks a reminder about how to report novels?
Absolutely. You can call 812-825-5355 if you do not have internet or are not comfortable with reporting online. You can go to our website at www.co.monroe.in.us, and if you go to the Highway page, you can report any type of hazard, from tree limbs to potholes, suggestions, paving requests. So yes, that's a couple means. You can also sign up for our email weekly list, email serve list, that you would be notified of upcoming road closings that in advance, or where we might be having lane restrictions and things like that. So if you, and our, the link is posted on our chat box, so if you'd like to copy that, that would probably be easier. Thank you, PSD.
You're on top of it, as always.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you so much. Next, let's hear from Washington Township Trustee Barb Uli. Good morning, Ms. Uli.
Good morning. There I am. Sorry about that. So I haven't had opportunity to speak to you guys for quite a while, but I did forward along a synopsis of everything that we've been doing since the beginning of this. But basically, the first quarter disbursements were Bloomington Township, $9,079.24, Perry Township, $11,826.92, and then Washington Township, $958. And that was just first, the first quarter of 2021. To date, though, Bloomington Township has received $23,616.2, Perry Township has received $42,095.68, Van Buren Township has received $4,144.30, Richland Township has received $9,925.96, and then Washington Township, the $958. The total COVID fund disbursements sits at $80,715.79 to date. But, and I think that that is kind of as we expected it. It, it pretty much falls along the ratios that we set out. We knew that Bloomington and Perry were going to be the, the larger recipients. Individuals helped just in the first three months of 2021. In Perry Township, there's 52 individuals. Bloomington Township had 13 individuals, and then Washington Township had three. To date, in Perry, it was 143 individuals, in Bloomington, 68 individuals. In Richland, it was 60 individuals. In Van Buren, it was four individuals, and in Washington, it was three. So as you can see, those funds are really helping a lot of people. If broken down by household, in the first quarter, that's 26 households in Perry Township, seven in Bloomington Township, and three in Washington Township. And then to date, 79 households in Perry Township, 40 in Bloomington Township, 22 in Richland Township, four in Van Buren, and three in Washington. You'll, you'll notice an absence of some of the townships, and those are townships who have decided that they are not going to participate due to lack of need. But, and, and so what we, we have redistributed those funds in order to ensure that Perry and Bloomington and Richland have the funds needed. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Uli. Commissioner Jones?
I'm just really glad to hear that the money is going out and helping people out who need help at this time. It's quite reassuring.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones? I'm just sorry, Commissioner Giffens?
I'd just like to remind folks that if anybody wants to make a donation to the different townships to help with some of the township assistance, they can do that also.
Right, so you're not requesting additional funds at this time, Ms. Uli?
We have $19,000 still in the checking account, and that's of that original $100,000. So I think I would like to wait a few weeks and to see what is, is coming up, because we seem to be slowing down a little bit. But as Ms. Cottle mentioned, we do seem to be also in a, in an uptick. And I know that in, in my township, it, it's, it's been a case of people who are just caught in the quarantine, and they, they're not getting paid during their quarantines, and so that's causing the issues. And so anytime that there's an uptick, I think we, our numbers are going to rise as well. So I, I think that inevitably, yes, I will be requesting more, but I'd like to wait and see what our next reports are.
That sounds like a great plan, Ms. Uli. Thank you again for your help, and thanks for being here to share this information with the community. Clearly, it's done some good, and it's, it's something that we're all really proud of. Glad we could work with the council to make this happen. So yes, keep us, keep us posted and keep up the great work, and send our thanks along to the other township trustees, if you would.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Great, so let's see if there are any other department updates. And I do not see any. And so with that, we are moving on to our public comment time period, and this is for items that are not on our agenda. And we have a three-minute limit per person for public comment, which also holds for our agenda items. So TSE, I assume it's Ms. Dayton, if you would please play the tone. Thank you. When you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds left to speak. So you will hear that tone at 2:30. We have a clock on the screen, and with that, we will begin our lightning round. I feel like a game show host. All right, first up is Fox Booker.
He'll need one moment to reconnect.
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I would try to keep this brief to three minutes. I was disturbed this morning to wake up and read this story in the IDS about a 29-year-old grad student named Arubek Amatruh, who was assaulted outside a college mall in February. He was left with bleeding palms, shattered glasses, and he had said he immigrated here to Bloomington because he felt safe from discrimination. Stay with me for a moment, though. Monday, County Plan Commission President Margaret Clemens made some unsettling public comments regarding the city's UDO process. To make in a bridge quote, she said, hi, my name is Margaret Clemens, and I've been in and around Bloomington since 1979, so you know for a good time, for more than 40 years. She goes on to, to say that she believes Bloomington is open and welcoming to diverse communities and how civil they are. But in the name of inclusivity, you have effectively erected an entire town for the recreational and leisure class at the expense of walking, of the walking class in Bloomington. In the name of inclusivity, you have created a sundown town where workers are not welcome after dark. It's really difficult to discuss sundown communities and not talk about our region in Indiana. Sundown communities were made illegal after ordinances were struck down in Louisville in, in, in 1917, but they persisted on for decades. And it's easy to talk about communities like Martinsville, where, you know, there was a brutal murder in 1968, but we also had, you know, a Klan bombing in 1968, and Bloomington was full of racist covenants that forbade anyone but the, the white race from living in communities. I was deeply, deeply disappointed to hear the brutal legacy of sundown communities co-opted for some type of points in a political diatribe. It was shameful, even if you feel like it wasn't blatantly racist rhetoric, it was at least a microaggression or a communication that, you know, communicated some sort of bias. And the important thing here is language, that language, that rhetoric always puts people behind us. One of the things that the gentleman mentioned who was assaulted was that his attacker several times asked him if he ate bats because he was part of the Asian community. We know that we've seen that rhetoric nationally used by politicians, and it's shameful to see rhetoric co-opted in our community that is harmful to marginalized communities.
Thank you so much, Mr. Booker. We appreciate you being here today. And next, we will go to Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, again here to remind you and the public that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. The goal of this month is to try to make the public aware and sensitive to this problem that we have in our community and to realize it really is here in our community, and hopes that they will be sensitive to it and be on the lookout for it and report it if it's seen, and then perhaps volunteer to help deal with it. There'll be a number of events this month to try to help bring that to the public's attention. One I want to highlight is on April 16th, from 11 to 4:30. One I want to highlight is on April sixteenth, from eleven to four thirty, the Department of Child Services is going to have an event out in their parking lot, right in front of their offices and the B M V offices. It'll be socially distant and very safe. And they've invited CASA to participate. So if you want to stop by for a few minutes and learn a little bit about what the problem is, how D C S deals with it, the role of a CASA, that would be a good opportunity for you to do so. Just so you know, the magnitude of the problem in our community in twenty twenty-one so far, and actually, these numbers are through the first of March, we have three hundred and ten children being served by a CASA. That means three hundred and ten children that are in the court system because their parents have abused and neglected them. Obviously, that well, not obviously, but they didn't all just arise in twenty twenty-one. Some of them probably, well, I've got a case that started in twenty eighteen. But that's how many children are being served right now. We have one hundred and thirty-three volunteers active at the moment, one hundred and thirty-three people who are serving as CASAs to advocate for the children in the court system. But right now, we have thirty-one children who are waiting for a volunteer to be available, to be assigned to them. We have a training coming up in June. It'll be June seventh through the thirtieth. People who want to help take on this responsibility will learn what the jobs of a CASA are, learn child protection law in Indiana, learn the and get a template for the kind of reports that the court expects to see when we have to report when there's a hearing. So this is a wonderful opportunity for you to help celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month. You can call three, 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 two, two, seven, two, or go to MonroeCountyCASA.org website to get any details that you might need to decide if this is a volunteer opportunity for you. I can tell you, as somebody who's been doing this for about eight years, it's very, very, it can be hard, but it's very, very satisfying when you resolve a case either by reuniting the children with the parents or seeing them successfully adopted into a forever home. So thanks for the opportunity to let me spread the word.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. And it looks like we have Margaret Clemens joining us. And again, just a reminder, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, fellow Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak because words do matter. And in throughout my life, I've worked very steadily and consistently to reduce the vestiges of racism. And it does hurt very much to be equated to somebody who has who has beaten someone because of color. And words matter. These allegations of racism in our community are a little bit too rampant. And my comments at the City Plan Commission were made as an individual, as a resident who's observed Bloomington and its growth. And I perceive and I'm I perceive institutionalized racism in the erection of multifamily housing at such a rampant pace. I believe that we are fostering opportunities to discriminate. And I also believe that we are promoting policies that make people who live in Bloomington, who work in Bloomington have a difficult time staying here after the sun goes down. Those people are both white and black. They're both black and white. They're both Asian and black and white. And I just say that these policies where, you know, we have heightened police presence, heightened ticketing for parking parking violations, et cetera, that we are verging on an era in our town about which we should be aware. And immediately following my presentation or my speech the other night, a community member and an advocate for multifamily housing said how delighted he was that he had such density of multifamily housing in in town. So because it gave him the right and the opportunity to walk to his favorite liquor store. So I stand by my comments. I'm concerned about racism. I'm concerned about eliminating and reducing racism. And I would like to say that it's hurtful to be equated with someone who beat a person because of his or her color. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens. All right, I don't see any other speakers from the public. Again, this is your prime, it's not on our agenda. Okay, great. Seeing none, we will move on with our regular agenda. And next is approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes for March thirty-first, first, twenty twenty-one.
All right, we have a motion and a second and we have the right year. And I would just ask that Ms. Freeman notes for the record that I I was absent March thirty-first. That doesn't appear to be on the minutes. And if I missed it, I apologize. Any other edits or comments, corrections? Great. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one?
Fisher Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you so much. And next item, please.
Move approval of the claims stack it accounts payable, April seventh, twenty twenty-one, and payroll, April ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Miller here, proud father.
Thank you very much and good morning. The total for claims was six hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents was for the Convention and Visitors Bureau for twenty twenty-one second quarter operational funds. Eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars was for downtown Bloomington for convention services. And finally, seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars was for Weddell Brothers Building for the Limestone Greenway Safety Rail. As far as payroll, the total was one million, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. And approximately seventy percent were for direct costs and the remaining approximately thirty percent for indirect costs.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, my. His first public appearance, is that it? Smiling. I was so surprised to see you back here with us today, but congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's been a journey.
Did you have any comments or exceptions, Commissioner Giffens, not about Cameron?
No.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to approval, please.
Fisher Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we will move on to new business.
Move to approve Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving Service Agreement. Fund name, county general. Fund number, one thousand dash three, zero, zero, four, five, dash, zero, eight, zero, three, in the amount of one thousand dollars, one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, we have two areas on the Cars Farm Greenway that need attention with asphalt. We have a heaving problem. And then we also had to cut out a piece of asphalt for a maintenance issue that we need to be re-asphalated. And that is all that this is for one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving Service.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, it seemed pretty straightforward.
All right, is there any public comment on this item? Remember just to click on the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. And I do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call a roll on Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving Service Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on to item B.
Move to approve Kona Ice of Bloomington Concession Service Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Whitmer, if you would please.
Yes, the park board voted on March twenty-fourth to award the concession contract to Kona Ice of Bloomington with your approval, of course. They have one to three food trucks available. They were the most responsive applicant. And the park board believes that they are best suited to provide the the safest route to food at the park for this year.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, is this just for when there's a game, a soccer game or something happening? Or are they always there?
They'll be there most of the time, like at the splash pad when we open up in the summer. They will be at athletic events. They may or may not be at athletic tournaments. If we have a special event that we are holding this year, we invite them to participate. So mostly, they'll be in and around the park throughout the year, popular times, Saturdays, Sundays.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I want to say I appreciate the fact that they have to show you proof of having been approved by the Health Department and things like that. So I applaud the efforts that the Parks Board goes through.
Thank you.
Right, insurance and all of those important things are also on that list. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote on, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Kona Ice of Bloomington Concession Service Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, and the next item, please.
Move to approve to award E M B paving bid for Cars Farm Greenway. Fund name, Next Level Trails. Fund number ninety-one oh seven, in the amount of eight hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitman?
Yes, the Cars Farm Greenway is being expanded all the way to Ellisville. And we are going to have two phases. One is from Ellisville to Woodyard Road, which is this particular bid that we're asking you to award for eight hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It hopefully will be completed by August of this year. And then sometime in the summer, we'll be going out to bid for what we call the southern section of that, which will be from Woodyard Yard to the Loesch Road parking lot. And this is grant funded from Next Level Trails grant from the state of Indiana.
Excellent. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just really excited that this trail is moving along and lots of progress is going to be made.
We are very pleased with it. And we have multiple departments of the county working on this. Legal and highway have been a tremendous asset in this project. So we appreciate all the help.
Excellent, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, one of the things I was looking at this morning was where Monroe County stands on our health index. And so increasing these trails allows for additional recreation throughout the county. And so I think this is a really wonderful thing to be adding.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's a great point. This is about quality of life. It can mean new, safer ways of commuting for folks. It certainly provides recreation and an opportunity to get out into into nature and away from traffic. It's amazing. The price tag is always shocking to me because this isn't a road. But it is a road. It is, it's a narrow road. There is a lot of work that goes into this. So this is, it's great that this is moving forward. And I knew there are a lot of folks in the community who can be very excited about this. So thanks to you and the board and your staff for continuing to to pursue this. And of course, as you note, legal and highway have all participated as well. So excellent work. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on awarding E M B paving, the bid for Cars Farm Greenway?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Three-Flock Partnership Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And we will now turn to Mr. Robertson and Ms. Brunel. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So before the partnership agreement, I was hoping to take, oh, you can't see my head.
There you are.
I was hoping to take this chance to introduce one of our newer staff members. Autumn is our our new naturalist. She's been working closely with the individuals related to this partnership. And she'll be here to answer some questions related to it. But she started with us in September, has been doing a great job. She's focusing on our environmental education programs. So if you ever have any questions related to plants, animals, gardening, she's your girl. But back to the the partnership agreement. So this partnership agreement is with Three-Flock Farm. They'll be doing business as the Plant Truck Project. So the Plant Truck Project is an initiative of some individuals that own Three-Flock Farm. Essentially, what they would like to do is utilize an area at Will Detmer Garden that's currently not being rented. They would like to use the space to grow produce and give away to the community. We did want to emphasize that they would be giving it away, not selling it. So the the food would be free for the community. They would also assist our staff with some gardening-related programming out at the park. So we're excited about it. We think it's beneficial for both our staff and our gardeners as well, just in the fact that they can assist us with some additional programming. So if you guys have any questions at all, Autumn and I are happy to answer.
Great, thank you so much. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Brunel?
I think he covered it. I'm also really excited to be working with them. The space, as John mentioned, hasn't been used before and it's not prepped for rental either. So it's just a really large patch of grass that's going to be a really great educational space and open for people to have an additional food resource in the community.
Excellent, thank you so much. And a belated welcome of the board to county government. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just, I remember that initially, when Will Detmer opened, there was an area that was being farmed by the community kitchen. And they have volunteers working there. And I believe the food was distributed through the community kitchen. Is that no longer happening? Is this replacing it?
So on one side of Will Detmer, closest to the road, closest to Burnell Pike Road, is still Hoosier Hills Food Bank. And then on the opposite side of the enclosed garden space, we have renters in one area and then a large plot of emptiness. So they will be in that large plot and Hoosier Hill will continue.
Okay, thank you. This is a wonderful project. I, more and more projects of this sort seem to be popping up around town. And it's a very good thing. It's wonderful to get fresh food to children in need.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, when I looked, two different things. When I looked at the map, it was hard for me to tell how big those plots were. Can you describe that for us, Autumn?
Yeah, so for community renters, they can rent 10 by 10 space. The Plant Truck Project will essentially be taking a four by four version of that. So it'll be about 40 by 40. So they will have two or three 40 by 40 plots. And then the fourth 40 by 40 foot, sorry, dozen feet, will be shared between them and myself to grow plants for specific programming events, such as a pumpkin program we're doing this fall.
Excellent, thank you. And I also want to commend Lauren McAllister, who I believe is one of the movers and shakers behind this. She has long talked about wanting to teach children especially about where their food comes from. So I applaud Lauren's efforts in this manner. She's great.
Yes, absolutely, Ms. McAllister. Thank you so much. And this is a win-win-win-win. This is so many fronts. This is so great. Look, I so appreciate that educational component and that assistance that's going to be there. But also, yes, growing fresh food for the community for those in need who don't have access. Amazing, amazing. What a great program. Something, another thing to be celebrated about Monroe County Government. So kudos to everyone involved in this. What an excellent thing. Let's see if there is any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for the vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call a roll on the Three-Flock Partnership Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, please?
Move to approve the 2021 through 2022 JDAI Coordination and Programming Grant Contract. Fun name, JDAI Coordination/Programming. Fun numbers, 9143 and 9145, in the amount of $55,000.
Second. Great, we have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. McAfee here.
Yes, you do. Good morning, all. Thank you for having me back again. I think I just saw you guys a couple weeks ago. So lots of, lots of good stuff happening over here in the youth justice arena. So what you have in front of you today is the fiscal year 2021-22 JDAI Grant. As you remember, the fiscal year is July 1 through June 30th. So this will become effective July 1. Quick JDAI reminder, Monroe County joined this initiative in 2014. We were the 19th county in the state to join. And to date, there are, I think I remember, 38 counties. We're starting to get more and more smaller counties, which I think is exciting. Initially, the initiative was targeting those large counties with lots of youth. Now we're getting some different kind of populations in the initiative. JDAI is an initiative of the Annie Casey Foundation. Up to date, as I said, we started this initiative in 2014. With this $55,000 award, we have now received $545,000 from the state for these initiatives. And the real goal of JDAI, it started as a detention initiative to keep kids out of detention, the unnecessary use. But they've really expanded it now, and we have a very strong base equity component. We have a very strong, very, very strong data component. We're looking at alternatives to detention, so it's not just as they like to tell us, it's not just a jailbreak. But it's also, it's finding programming to keep kids out of these centers, but also get them back on the right path. So as I said, $545,000. The new grant that we're coming, that you all are looking at to approve, has some really exciting focus points to it. Probably the biggest one for us, which will, it's an area that we've struggled with, but it's youth and family engagement. Oftentimes, what happens is the big people around the table come up with all the solutions, and then we tell the little people what the solution is. And then when it doesn't work, we sit around and kind of scratch our heads about, well, how did we get that wrong? And really, JDAI is so strong in ensuring that all of the stakeholders impacted are at the table when those conversations are made. We're looking at partnering with some national talent to help us do this well. The word in the JDAI circuit is if you do this badly, it's worse than doing it, not doing it at all, because it leaves a bad taste in folks' mouths, and it's really hard to overdo that. We're also purchasing sporting equipment for law enforcement officers, hoping they can have some of those informal engagement opportunities with kids and families, primarily focusing on basketballs and footballs. We did this last, actually, I think it was about a year ago this time with BPD. And now we're partnering with the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to provide those resources. So again, you know, if an officer sees kids at the park or out on the street or something, you know, it gives them kind of something to use to introduce themselves. We also have funds that are going to be available to pay for pro-social activities. We can buy memberships at clubs. We can pay camp fees. We can pay for sporting equipment or sporting fees. You know, when I was growing up, my mom used to tell me busy hands were happy hands. And I think I liked that mantra for my family as well. But we all know that these activities can be really, really expensive. And so again, we have grant funds to support youth and families in finding activities that they can participate in, that we'll be able to help support. As we did last year, we're going to be doing care packages for kids again. This was a huge, it was very well-received around the state, I will say, these care packages. What we did is we pulled together items, and some of them were educational. We had bubbles. We had playing cards. We had food items. And we dropped them off to the kids and families of court-involved youth. It was really just a way for us to say, we're thinking of you. We're not just about compliance, but we also care. And that initiative was so well-received, we're going to continue to support it to the next grant cycle. Two things that I'm really excited to talk about in addition to these things. We have funds to support the Monroe County Childhood Condition Summit. That's spearheaded through our Youth Services Bureau and BTCC. And what we're going to support, we're using funds to pay for accessibility services. They've long wanted to have closed captioning or sign reading or some sort of mechanism to reach a broader audience. And we thought this was such a good fit with our JDAI funds when we're talking about accessibility and talking about community awareness. So we're really excited about that partnership. And that's a brand-new partnership this year. Finally, we're going to bring in some trainers, facilitators for an intervention for family violence. It's different than a batterer's group. The dynamics of youth and families having conflict is different than typical adult-to-adult conflict. So it really does require a specialized intervention. We had tried to bring this into our community last year, but with the pandemic, the facilitators are actually from California, so travel became problematic. Four days of virtualness became very problematic, so we kind of bumped it back to this year. Not surprising, as the adult system has seen, we have also seen an increase in youth and family conflict. Too much time together is sometimes too much time together. And not having the skills or the resources to be able to figure out how to improve communication, resolve conflict. That's what this intervention will do for our community and provide those resources to youth and families. That is our 2021 grant.
Excellent. Thank you for all the detailed information. And let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
This is just such a really wonderful program. I'm delighted that it's continuing on. I'm especially pleased that the partnership with Monroe County Sheriff's Department, that it's so important that children discover that there are real people inside those uniforms. I think often they only see the uniform.
Absolutely.
This is a very good thing.
Commissioner Giffens?
You're muted, Penny.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. I want to say how much I appreciate how you reach out to different parts of the community. Last year, I got to go through, or participated in the interrupting racism program that you all put on. And I was really pleased that you reached out and included CASA volunteers and people in different, you know, parts of the community that impact kids. And so I really appreciate all the kinds of things that you do. And I have to say, the interrupting racism was the best kind of diversity, equity, inclusion program I've been through thus far.
Thank you. That's great to hear. You know, one of the things that JDAI really supports is breaking down silos and not having it be a youth justice problem or an education problem or a law enforcement problem. But forcing all of us to step back, and you know, these are our kids in our community, so it's an us problem. And I will tell you, that has been a challenge sometimes because we're used to kind of working with that head-down mentality and not really looking up to see what the supports of the community can bring to bear. We recently offered a two-session adolescent brain development. And it was really how to work with adolescents, because sometimes they look like big people on the outside. But on the inside, the research is telling us not so much. And, you know, back to your comment, Commissioner, about community engagement. We had CASAs participate. We had probation participate. We had educators. Our deputy prosecutor participated. As much as the virtual world has kind of caused things to feel differently, I will say for accessibility, you know, you can just log on and be there. You don't have to drive. You don't have to park. You don't have to pay. You know, it's much more accessible. So in those sessions, we had over 150 participate. And we were also able to extend the invitation outside of Monroe County. So we had folks from the Indiana Department of Correction that were participating. We had CASAs out of Johnson County as well as Monroe County that were participating. So I appreciate those compliments, and it absolutely is something that we're paying attention to, and we're striving to do better every day.
Great, thank you so much. And it is important for us to remember that these investments pay forward into the future in a very positive way for our community. So it's wonderful that so much thought's gone into this programming. Appreciate you and your staff and everyone who works on these endeavors. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on, raise hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Mr. Shelton?
Good morning again, Jim Shelton. As a CASA, I enthusiastically support this. I agree with everything that Ms. Giffens has said, and you, Al, have said, this is a wonderful program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like we have Ms. Whitman's.
I would like to thank you, Christine, for all of your efforts, because interrupting racism at an early age really is transformational in the lives of young people of all races, and it helps build a stronger community. So thank you for your good and hard work.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any other public comments. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call a roll on the 2021-22 JDAI Coordination and Programming Grant Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and a big thank you.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
And a big thank you to all of you as well. Thank you.
All right, next item, please?
Move to approve ratification of Security Pro 24/7 Agreement Extension. Fun name, county general, fun number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second. Great, we have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Rice here to talk about this.
I think I can talk about it as well.
George, thank you.
We started a program with 24/7 last fall to help us with the mask and COVID restrictions. And this is just adding more time to that agreement through July 1. I think Penny had indicated that there was a goal of having a lot of, some of the restrictions removed by the end of May. But we're realistic as well, and we think that there may be some bumps along the road even after that.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Rice, did you have something to add?
Yes, and sorry about that, my delay getting on. I did want to let you know that the Board of Health approved this unanimously at last night's meeting as well. So they really appreciate the support for the Health Department that this contract provides.
Excellent. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just really do appreciate this program. I know that a lot of businesses have really appreciated the help they've gotten from Security Pro. No business owner really wants to police people over these kinds of things. So it's very helpful to have an outside source for that.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Commissioner Jones had said. When I attend the downtown Bloomington, Inc. meetings, I've heard very, very positive feedback on this. They're very appreciative of this program.
Yeah, and just for the public's edification, these folks are working in the city and outside the city at various establishments. It began with bars, restaurants, and it has included some retail spaces as well. And, you know, they're not there to be punitive. They're there to educate and inform and to hand out masks if people need them, which still happens, apparently. So, you know, I think this is a great way to support our business community and to keep commerce going. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on making this happen. And they've done a really great job in providing information to specific business owners as well, and some training and some creative thinking about how to conform with regulations and yet still have a thriving business. So I think that's all been very important, and I'm glad that we could do this. And once again, working with the council to utilize care funding for this important endeavor. So let's see if there's any public comment on this particular item. Just click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the page. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ratification of Security Pro 24/7 Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you all, and thank you, Ms. Rice. And we'll move on to the next item, please?
Move to approve Chambly Architect Agricultural Services Agreement. Fun name, motor vehicle highway, fun number 1176, in the amount of $5,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning again. This is not for agricultural services. So this is actually to begin the process of locate, for determining the location for our new Brine building. You approved, well, basically, we received the funds from NDOT to build a Brine system and turn to help with some of the bridges within the county. So if you have any questions about this contract, this is to start that process. So, and Toby Turner is on here, so if you have any specific questions about Brine, he would be happy to answer those for you.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Turner, did you have anything to add?
I'm here.
Did you, did you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, except this is going to be great. It's going to be another tool in our toolbox for fighting snow and ice. It's not a cure-all-do-all, but it is a step forward, absolutely.
Great. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just really relieved that this is not an agricultural service. I was trying to imagine what brine had to do with agriculture. It's not something that we really think of as helping plants grow or anything.
Good point.
I don't know. I can use all the help I can get with growing a plant, so.
Brine isn't the way to go.
That's the path to the brown thumb, the brown thumb in growing. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah. I wanted to have an explanation of what the brine system is, whether there's cost savings, if it is kinder to the county roads and bridges and, you know, if it has less of an environmental impact if we go with that.
Yeah, so, so what brine is, brine is actually just saltwater. Instead of, instead of granular salt, it is liquid. And what it does is it allows us to get out earlier for a storm and put that in place where it will stay there. The problem with granular products is traffic will beat it off. By the time the storm comes, it'll be in the ditch. So we try not to get out too early with, with the, with the granular salt. It will take less salt to make the brine and plus it stays there on the road way longer. We can use the same product that we have in our salt barn now. We take that same product over and put it in this machine and this machine makes saltwater. So we're not actually buying a different product. We're taking the same salt out of our barn and, and making, making the brine. Environmentally, I think it would, we will use less product because we're not putting as much down or as often. Also, truck emissions, so the product, the brine will not allow the snow and the ice to stick to the road, so it'll plow off easier. So our guys will be making less passes, less fuel, hopefully get them home earlier.
So it sounds like it'll improve public safety then as well.
Absolutely. And, and we will be taking baby steps with this. We'll be learning. So we'll start out with the bridges, start out with some of our more busy roads. But the system that we've selected to put in is going to be big enough to expand on where if we want to move forward, start out with maybe one or two trucks putting brine down, select areas. And then as we learn to use the product and as we see how it works for us and what roads need it and what roads don't and what temperatures it work at and what it don't. The system is, is very easily expanded and can make as much as we would ever want.
Excellent. Thank you. Those are all great, great advantages to this.
Sorry, I had to mute. So is there any need to purchase additional equipment to actually spread this material or do we have enough of that?
Currently with, with the money we received, we, we should be able to get our little building built to put the system inside, have some electronic functions that need to be out of the weather to keep it, so we can use it a long time. There'll be a 10,000 gallon tank at this time for storage. So once the brine's made, it can sit outside, it won't freeze, store there for a long time. We're going to make the containment area for that tank. For two tanks, we're going to purchase one tank at the beginning to start that way. But that way, if we want to add to the system, we already have the infrastructure there to add the other tank. There will be a tank that actually goes in back of a truck. A lot of you have seen these, NDOT uses them on 69 and the state roads that put that liquid down. We will be doing the same thing as they did. So we would, we would have a truck or two designated to, to put the brine down. So there would be some equipment there that's needed. But we should have a budget at this time to take care of everything we need.
Okay, great. So the building itself, the manufacturing equipment, as it were, and then the actual equipment that goes on the truck, all of that is going to need to come out of MBH, Motor Vehicle Highway?
Yeah, it actually, I believe we received 285,000. And we went to the council last month and appropriated it into a line to start it into the MBH fund.
Excellent. Great. Thanks for all that information. No one wants to think about snow and ice right now because we're beginning into spring. But if we're prepared, it could be an insurance policy against a bad storm next year. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Chambly Architectural Services Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Duke Energy LLC Utility Reimbursement for the Bicentennial Pathway Project. Fund name, Cumulative Capital Trails, fund number 1138, in the amount of $16,384.08.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Ridge.
So this is part of our bicentennial pathway project, so we'll have to have some basically minimal utility relocations for the project. So this is, so we can get that process started to get Duke Energy reimbursed when they do the utility relocation.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I expect that the utility relocation date is up in the air. We just have to wait for Duke to decide to do it.
So. So at the beginning of a project, the utility companies will submit a work plan and basically a timeline. So we try and work that into our projects. And then a lot of times when you have the bigger utility companies such as Duke, you have the other smaller utilities that might be attached to their poles and things. So they would have to wait for Duke to do their location. So it's kind of a trickling effect on how it can go. So it's just an estimate of, of their timing of when they work the project into their schedule.
Yeah.
Nicely said.
Yeah, I wanted to know if there's any recourse if they don't meet the timeline, you know, I mean.
No, there's not. And it's very disappointing. I do know that NDOT has started including into funding of the projects. I believe it's called Construction Inspection for Utilities. It's new, so I'm still trying to learn the ins and outs of that and what that consists of. So I'm not sure if it's basically bringing our consultant that we hire for construction inspection onboard a little earlier for the utility relocation. Again, it's, it's brand new, so I'm hoping maybe that's something that's in the, in the realm of trying to keep the utility companies more on a, on a schedule. But at this time, there is no repercussions for a utility to company to hold up a project.
Yeah. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom screen. I do not see any. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Duke Energy LLC Utility Reimbursement for Bicentennial Pathway Projects?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. And once, once this is done, we'll come back and ask you how we are in time line for completing the project. We didn't want to ask today. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve USI Consultants, Inc. Call Agreement.
Second.
On-call. Sorry, that's.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second and an agreement that this is about on-call services. And Ms. Ridge?
So we have, as you're aware, is that since you approved many contracts for the highway department, that we, we work with a lot of consultants. We have quite a few active consultants, whether it be a bridge project, an intersection project, or a road study, corridor study, connectivity study. So USI Consultants reached out to Monroe County about future work in Monroe County. So not having built a relationship with USI at this point. So we try and bring a firm on as an on-call engineering services, so we can get a feel of their expertise kind of to build a relationship. So we usually start a consultant off on something on this ground basis and maybe utilize them for things that maybe is pulse to overwhelmed it at a certain time to reach out to an engineering firm to maybe do a study for us on an intersection improvement and see what it would basically cost us to do something like that. What are our options if we look at a high crash location? As of right now, we're looking at one at Dillon Road and Old 37 South. Then you might have a firm assist you with some of the legwork on doing something like that. So this is kind of where we just wanted to begin with USI. And kind of they just are eager for work in Monroe County. They know we do a lot of projects. They know we finish our projects. And so this is just that first step to try and see how Monroe County and USI could work together.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that I think this is a really good idea to bring them on in this way and kind of get a feeling for what kind of firm they are before really getting into the big expenses with them.
Yep.
Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you for explaining that so thoroughly. Appreciate it.
Excellent. I don't have any questions and we'll see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the page. Do not see any. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on USI Consultants, Inc. for an on-call agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And just to note, we do not have any, we did, we did continue item J to next week, so we are at the end of our agenda. We do not have any appointments today. I just have a few quick announcements. As we saw, Ms. Uli at the beginning of our meeting talked about the Township Assistance Program. Every county resident lives in a township. So please, if you need assistance, please contact your township trustee. The commissioners and county councils work together to ensure that they have the funding necessary because of the pandemic to help residents who are struggling to pay for basic necessities like housing and utilities. So please contact your trustee and if you need assistance, you can find a list of all the trustees and their contact information at the end of every one of our meeting minutes. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. But also on the emergency management website as well, webpage as well through co-monroe.in.us. Also note, we are still offering CARES funding for businesses and social service organizations in the county. Right now, that funding deadline is set for April 30. So we are nearing that time where if you have COVID-related expenses that have not been covered by other programs and they are non-payroll expenses, please apply for funding. Go to co-monroe.in.us. It is still right there in the center of our webpage if you need information or the application. And again, this is, this program slated to end at the end of April. And it appears that's about when the federal programming with the American Rescue Plan will be picking up steam. So fortuitously, I think we picked the best date possible. So, but let's see how things go, but, but don't wait, don't delay. We really need to make sure that those applications are in and complete by the end of April. And Ms. Lemmons will work with you to make sure that your application is complete. So that, to date, we, well, to the, through the end of February, we have provided 816,541 dollars for county businesses and social service organizations. So that is a huge thing. I also want to point out, I am putting a link in the chat. We are participating in the 2021 Solidarity Sleepout with Beacon Shalom. So if anybody's interested in contributing, there is the link. And we are Team Monroe County Commissioners and we would appreciate your support. We're not competitive or anything, but we would appreciate your support. It's a great cause and we are looking forward to participating. Hopefully the weather will be great. So anything else for the good of the order, Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we are just coming upon the 11:30 hour. We have our WIC session coming up next. So how about 11:40 to regroup for our WIC session? And with that, this regular session is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well.